All right, let's uh call a board at seven o'clock and we'll start the debate. Pledge to the flag.
I am the indigenous to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first up, we have visitor citizens forum at this time. Any person that visits before the council, not scared of going in there and they speak to the council, no formal action that we take in the house as part of this week.
No one can sign up?
Huh?
No one can sign up?
All right, first up, we have a public hearing. So um one of the things that we do whenever we're passing ordinance is that we always have a public hearing. And the idea being that floor is open, so you can say whatever you want. We can get inputs, uh because when we now start debating the ordinance, that's what these people are for. So they're the ones that then debate and make the decision and vote or not vote or whatever. So, once that debate starts happening, there's not much interaction with the floor, because this is their job. So upfront, if we have public hearings, you can, the public hearing lasts as long as you want it to last, until everybody's happy and then we move on. And we do that every time we pass an ordinance, just to make sure everybody can have a say in it if you want to. That's, that's what we try to do. So, we have two public hearings because we have two ordinances that we're looking at on the agenda, okay? The first public hearing, then, is a public hearing on the fence ordinance providing opportunity for citizen comment. So, you can, it's a public hearing now, and uh so, the floor is open. Does anyone have questions, comments, anything about the proposed fence ordinance? I know Jeff is gonna speak when we, when we get to the ordinance.
Correct.
It's perfectly fine. But does, does anyone have any question?
What is the fence?
What is the fence? It's in the packet, Sandy. It's uh, we're just looking at making certain changes to the fence ordinance, streamlining it, and um the area that's causing the most debate is what to do about waterfront. Just summarize it. I think that's where a lot of the, the issue was. But no real substantive changes to the heights, or the materials, or the usual suspects. Um, you know, we're not, we're not somebody to allow twelfth fences or anything. Okay, um is there any, anyone else? Um, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing on the fence ordinance.
I have a motion to close the hearing. Do I have a second? A second from Ed? Always in favor? Very good, thank you. Um, the second public hearing is a, public hearing is scheduled on the investment ordinance to provide an opportunity for citizen comments. So, under a Texas law, if you're gonna invest funds, you have to have a policy. And we've had a policy in place, um, and what we're doing is we're revising the policy now, and we're making certain changes to it. We're, we're, the changes that we have are, we'll, we'll go through them, but basically, it lays out what are the investments that the city can invest in, out of the, the groups. The state says, here are the things you can invest in. City, you pick out of this group, what will, what, what you want to invest in, what you're comfortable with. And, and then you set up your own policy. And so, right now, because we're about to switch over, we're now gonna have funds, we're gonna start accumulating funds, we wanna have an investment policy now, to invest our excess funds. And so, that's kind of why we're trying to hash out the investment policy. So, does, does anyone have any questions or comments about, um, the investment policy is governed under state law, the Public Investment Act. The state says, this is what cities, municipalities, school districts, here's the limited list of things you can invest in. So, even if our policy said, you can go invest in Guatemalan stock market, we can't. You can't invest in the stocks. Okay? And that's spelled out in the ordinance.
So?
Yes, sir.
So what is the percentage, I think what we keep debating about is what percentage are we gonna allow the city to invest, of the funds available?
And, and so what, what I think is gonna happen, what I, part of what's in the ordinance tonight is, the policies are, are one thing, and then the city council will by resolution set limits. They're gonna set a limit and say, in CDs, you can only invest X, in, you know, money market accounts, you can only invest Y. Or, the city council's gonna come up with percentages, or, these people will decide what are the investment limits. So, but what we're gonna do is, that's a resolution that's outside of the ordinance, because you don't wanna have to keep changing the ordinance if, if, if the city council says, now we wanna allow you to put more money in the CD. So, so part of the, there's two separate pieces. One is, what can you invest in, and the second piece is, what they're gonna decide, how much can you put in each bucket? That decision is one they're gonna talk about later.
So we, we have no plan on putting an amount, a percentage amount that we would, the city will allow the, the council to invest of the overall budget?
Correct. I don't understand that, but yeah.
Well, so, let me explain so you understand. So what, what I'm saying is, in, in the several times we've been debating this and all that stuff, the city, or what I've heard from the residents and all that stuff, is we want a certain percentage, whether it be seventy percent of the money in the bank is allowed to be invested, and the thirty percent stays in, forty percent, it's real simple. So, but I, I think that should be in our policy and not a decision for the council.
The, the council is gonna decide the policy.
Well, they're deciding, well, they're deci-
Yeah, I think, I mean, it's just the same thing, so. So what's gonna happen is, these, these five people are gonna have to vote on a number. They're gonna, these five have to do that. They, they have to come up with a number, whatever it is, because it's gotta be a number. You can't just say, investment of your one. They could do that, but that's not what you're saying. So, it's their job to decide what that number is. They're gonna come up with that number, however they decided. I don't, we haven't had that debate yet. So whatever they're comfortable with, and then, that'll get voted on.
So Brian, let me, let me just, so what change is the, we inserted a control in there. It says the town council shall adopt maximum investment limits, either in dollar terms, or as a percentage of town assets, of value, if each asset type, you know, full CD, money market, mutual fund. That control wasn't there these last couple times we've debated it. So, to your point, that's been the whole sticking problem. Nobody has a problem with having investment policy. We have a problem with the amount that's gonna be taken out of the banks and put over there. So I think, I, I'm hoping that control addresses that, but if you guys have, you know, additional information, it would, yeah, the tighter the control is, the better the thing's are.
Yeah, so, and, and as far as I, we have never had a discussion on, you know, like you said, eighty, twenty, sixty, thirty, sixty, you know, what is that thing? Now, Rita, Rita Brock, who's to your left, I, I met with Rita. Rita offered to kind of lay out scenarios, like a sensitivity analysis on, on how that, you know, different options, all the options and the pros and cons, doing some, some analysis. Rita has volunteered to do that, and I think that's great. So, I think that would be an important input to them, to know, this is the different, you know, these are the outcomes of different mixes and, 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 so they can look at it and say, well, you know, I'm comfortable with option number four, and six, or whatever. And, and so, I think that debate, Rita hasn't obviously done the analysis, so, um, and I appreciate you doing that, Rita. So that's probably something that will be next month, will be the actual numbers that are, that's what. Any other, any other questions? Okay, uh, did you have a question?
No.
Uh, do I have a motion to close the, uh, public hearing?
I have a motion and we close the second public hearing.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, from Clint, always in favor? Okay, thank you. All right, next up? All right, so uh, public hearings are done. Our regular agenda, first thing up is consideration of the simple recycling program. So, we talked about this last time. Linda, that's on you.
Uh, Mr. Khan is here with Simple Recycling to talk to you about the contract and the terms and answer your questions. He has a PowerPoint presentation.
Good evening, uh, good evening, council, mayor, and staff. My name is Keith Khan, the North Texas Regional Rep for Simple Recycling. Uh, we are a for-profit curbside collection program for textiles and wholesale recycler. Uh, we currently work for many municipalities around your city. I'm here at the urging of one of your residents that has sit and heard about our service and said, this would be great to have for the town that lived with Bill. So I came by and thought we'd see if this might give it. Now, I'll tell you a little bit about how the program works. First of all, our program is a, it's a free curbside textile recycling program. It's a high-impact environmental initiative. It's a, the city can take, uh, at no cost or operational requirements. I think it's important to know upfront that our program is free, both to city and to residents. No cost, no mess for any manpower, uh, money, or operational, uh, help from the city. Okay? Let's see if I might work this correctly.
Come on, don't tell me it's not working.
That's the pointer.
Let me see.
Did it work here?
Did it work, brother?
Uh, there's one isn't, oh.
I can't point it at the wall.
You have, you gotta be smarter than the, you have to be smarter than the apparatus, so I'll get in there. All right, so, the facts about, and the first question might be, well, why do we need this service in our city? Well, the facts about textile waste. First of all, textile waste is the fastest-growing part of the residential waste stream. I guess I'm not close enough or something.
All right, give me the, you're really going.
You have to aim it at the clip.
So, this will be astounding to you, over twenty-five billion pounds of textiles are generated annually. That's eighty-two pounds per resident, per year. And out of all the ways that are to collect this material, only, uh, which through nonprofit donations and other ways, only fifty percent's actually collected according to the EPA. Eighty-five percent ends up in the landfills. Okay, so this is an initiative the city has taken on in the area to help reduce what goes into the landfill. Okay, next slide, please. So, it's about, this is an older slide I have, but it's, it's still true today. Uh, again, about forty percent. The residential waste stream for textiles has increased over forty percent. Okay, while the diversion rate's only increased by two percent. So it's fast fashion, it's all the things, you know, new, new styles, people are getting lots of, and the inexpensiveness of clothing, there's so much of it that's ending up in the landfills. Next slide, please. Okay, so, let me just tell a little bit about the program itself. This, what we do is apply a proven collection, uh, curbside collection model to reduce this waste. Uh, we offer the maximum convenience to residents, we keep it simple, understandable, utilized, again, it's free of cost, and for city to residents, and it actually creates some revenue for the city. Uh, as a, let me just paint you a picture. What we do is, we're gonna, and you have packets up there in your, in front of you if you wanted to review those, but quickly, what we do is, we put together a mailer using your logo, your city logo, and town logo, and create this packet, again, at no cost to the city or town. Inside it has two bags that, that, that the residents can fill with textiles, clothing, shoes, home goods, those kind of things. And they can place it out on a regular recycle day, next to their recycle bin, okay? So they don't have to remember any special days. So here's what the actual bag will look like. It's a nineteen-gallon bag. On the bag, it talks about what can go inside the bag, which, you know, home goods of all kinds, such as men's clothing, women's clothing, children's clothing, shoes, accessories, small kitchenware, you know, sporting equipment, all kinds of things that people end up throwing in the trash or donating, hopefully, but if they don't, they can sometimes use the trash. And so, what this program is about is a message to residents of all the cities we work with is that you can put, you can donate your stuff, or you can put it in these orange bags and put it on the curb on your regular recycle day, you just can't put it in the trash. Okay? It's no longer an option. So it's an educational process. Uh, next slide, please. Next slide? Oh, there it is. So, uh, and I'm, just another touch, uh, I want, another thing I wanna add is that we are actually mentioned, uh, the city of Fort Worth has recently put together a zero-waste initiative program, and we are mentioned as a curbside collection model, specifically in their waste plant, as a way to reduce what goes into the landfill. In their waste zero, uh, uh, initiative plan they just put together. So, here it talks about free residential curbside service, designed, we have the bags you've seen, all, we provide all the informational material, again, all the trucking, manpower, equipment, insurance, uh, that's required, and we also do work with local nonprofits and charity groups to increase total recycling versus compete against that. So, again, in cities where we work with, for example, in Plano or Little Elm, uh, they all have, they have bin programs, they have nonprofits that collect the material. Um, we still collect in addition to that. We, and they, and if anything, we've seen the nonprofits' material they collect increase, because now there's a lot more awareness around, hey, this is important. I've got, you know, a shirt that's missing buttons, and I've got, or a pair of jeans with a broken zipper. I can't, you know, I probably don't wanna donate that, but I don't wanna throw it away either, right? So this gives another place, another option, okay, for, for more people. Makes them more aware of what they need to do with this material. Next slide, please. So, you might wanna ask, what do we do with the material that we collect? This is a big question. Now, again, as I mentioned, we are a wholesale recycler for, we've been in business for over thirty years. About twenty percent of what we collect, we resell to thrift chain, thrift stores. You know, and they want stuff that's really nice, that's rack-ready, if that makes sense. About ten to twenty percent of it, we sell to thrift chains around the country. Yeah, I bet what's left, the eighty percent, about forty-five percent, gets exported for international, to our international recyclers, where they're willing to fix the buttons on the shirt, or fix the zipper on the, on the pair of jeans, and reuse that material. Okay, resell it, reuse it. Then about thirty percent of that eighty percent is gonna go for automotive uses, for wiping rags, uh, insulation inside cars and things like that. And then the final twenty percent's gonna be used with our partner, our recycling partners, to make carpet padding, stuffing for teddy bears, insulation, things like that. So, ninety-five percent or more of what we collect, gets reused, repurposed, or recycled. Okay? Next slide, please. So, this is an older slide. This is some of the Texas cities that participate in, in our curbside collection program. Plano, Bedford, Halkum City, Kennedale, Little Elm, Sugarland, Austin, The Woodlands, uh, let's see, in this area, Providence Village, Lancaster, Bedford, already mentioned Bedford. Let's see, uh, if it goes on, Providence Village, Savannah, uh, let's see, some little cities up there, Savannah, the other one is, uh, Ploma Creek, Corin, The Colony, that's all I can think of right now. But anyway, we continue to add more and more as we move forward, because, again, it's at no cost to the city, no cost to the residents, and the only thing we ask the city to do to help us is with the awareness campaign. In other words, your city website, you know, bring the attention on your city website. If you do, uh, constant contact to your residents, if you have email, uh, if you, uh, your Facebook page, your social media pages, which is where we do a lot of awareness with a lot of the cities we work with, where my city plug into social media. So, uh, all we ask is that you help us with those awareness campaigns, get the word out about, hey, this is something we're implementing at the city, we wanna reduce what goes to the landfill. If you wanna donate, please do. If you can't lump or don't, put it in these orange bags, put them on the curb on your regular recycle day. Okay?
I guess, I could ask a question.
Sure.
So on, so on our recycling days, which are every other week, you would be coming through town, trying to, picking up what's here. You'd make a run through town, right?
Yes.
I mean, would it, I don't know what your, I don't know what your cost structure is. I, would it, would it make more sense for, we have bulk trash, which is a big event for us every other month, which is when people really gear up to, you know, for the, that's an event, right?
Yeah.
As opposed to on a generic, you know, I'm taking out, I'm just wondering, would that make more visibility to, you know, for us, because that we put on the marquee, that's a big event, the bulk trash, where you can take anything you want out to that curb, as opposed to just a generic, it's every?
Well, our, our, our history has been that we do both, actually. For The Colony, last spring, I collect over, I think eleven thousand pounds at the spring cleanup event. And we then issued, uh, the, you know, the weekly pickup for them. They, they do it by zone weekly. And so, um, and we collect, uh, over ten, I think, last month, over ten thousand pounds. So it's just every month, we just were collecting in that city as an example. So, we do the events, that also brings awareness. Um, the people have the direct mailers, we also have to go every six months and do another refresh mailer, so people understand, this is something I need to be doing, put these bags, get them in the closet, or clean out the garage, or do what I need to do, just as long as I can keep it out of the landfill. You know, that's what our initiative's about. So, we do both. We'll show up on those, on those days with the van, and, uh, you know, help bring awareness to how important it is to keep this, uh, material out of the landfill.
So, this was presented, there was two questions that came up.
Sure.
I think you may have answered one of them, uh, the exclusivity, so we can still have Salvation Army, any other?
Oh, yeah. Uh, well, as an example, you know, we all get those mail, those things in the mail, donate to whatever, uh, put your, you know, schedule pickup, sure, that's not, that's, our exclusivity is for anyone who's doing a regular collection like we are, uh, on a, on a weekly basis. And we're not, we're not trying to block those nonprofits or anyone that wants to, to solicit your, your citi, your citizens.
And then the only other question that came up was the, the term of the agreement. So can we do this for a year, see how it goes? Uh, there, there seemed to be some question of whether this was.
Yeah.
Once and done, and it goes forward, or do we have a two-year commitment? Is, what's the commitment, what's the term?
Uh, our standard con, standard agreement is a four-year agreement. Uh, we sometimes modify that slightly downward, but we're actually making an investment into the city, have over two dollars and fifty cents per, per resident for this direct mail piece that we pay for. As you can understand, logistically, with the trucks and the manpower and insurance and everything, it takes us about two years to actually break even on average city. Uh, normally, as town this size would be considered too small for us to do service. However, since we're right, we're picking up Little Elm, we drive right by here every day, I thought it could be a nice tip. But, uh, we've, you know, so, you know, I guess to answer your question is, we're looking for a long-term relationship. If we aren't doing our job for some reason, if we're, for some reason, we're not picking up, or this, you know, and this hasn't happened, we've never lost a contract since we started this program, over three and a half years ago, including the city of Austin and others. Um, if, but for some reason, we're not doing what we're supposed to be doing, then obviously this counts for the city, the town, to, uh, to terminate the pay.
And then the last thing was just outside the town, the ETJ area. Are they included? Or is this just the town and tenants? We have an ETJ that surrounds us.
ET, oh, well.
The county area.
Are they, uh, do you have jurisdiction?
We don't have the, we don't have the contract.
We don't do that, yeah. Uh, my question is though, are you, are you, you said we drive it by.
We're maybe at Little Elm, I'm picking up Ploma Creek, Providence Village, or.
So it's only, it's only areas that have a town, as opposed to people living in the county.
Right, well, now, are those, is that a water district?
No.
Who has, who has jurisdiction out of those?
My guess is you would, you would go like to the HOA and say, look, here's something we're doing, you're in the county, technically you're no senior.
Yeah, like Ploma Creek is, is an HOA that had jurisdiction. They're, they're managed by a water district, a law firm out of Houston or something.
Yes, we're talking just the, the town area.
Yeah, and we love, and I mean, if it's here also, we'd like to, I like to understand how to approach that and get them included as well. There's more, is how we make, come out on this whole thing, it's a long-term agreement, and, and, and have them follow you. That's the only way to come out, right? So, so I just, I need to know more about, about that.
Please, uh, thank you. Is, so, normally, like with Allied, because they're using city streets and they're for-profit, they pay franchise fee.
Who's this?
The garbage company.
Okay.
Anybody that uses public right-of-ways, you know, public streets, um, they pay franchise fee, because they're using city prob, that's, but you're not charging anything. So, my guess would be in all your cities, there is no such, because there's nothing to base it on, because you're not providing money.
We don't, we don't, we don't charge the city anything.
No, no, it'd be the other way around. The city, like, we collect money from the garbage company because they're using, AT&T is using the right of way of the road. They have to pay the city a fee each year. They're using, you know, you can't, so I was just curious, there is no, no cities require you to pay an access fee or anything?
I've never heard of that since, until tonight, actually.
But you did mention, right, that there was a revenue opportunity for the city?
We do pay the city twenty dollars per ton for what we collect. Again, not a lot, a lot of cities use it for beautification, uh, boards and whatever. Providence Village that, that had, passed a motion to donate to a one-year project of some kind, so they use it for that. So, but a lot of, a lot of the cities, we work with, have a beautification affiliate, the Texas, you text beautiful, so they'll donate, they'll just use it for that. I was going to the next slide, I think that's all the slides, though, pretty much. See what's left. I think that's everything. This is just a screenshot of Facebook page from, uh, the city of Plano. This was an older slide, over ninety-two thousand pounds since inception. Little Elm, I got a Facebook post from them, thirty-eight thousand pounds since inception. Next slide. And, uh, you know, based on the size of your city, we think we might be able to like ten thousand pounds a year. Again, not a lot, but it all adds up to keep it out of landfill, right? Next slide. And that's it. So, if there's any other questions, you guys pretty much jumped in there on, on the agreement.
Please?
Well, yeah, I had a, a question. So how long has Little Elm been in this, um, argument?
Little Elm's been, uh, involved with us, I wanna say since last November, took up on about a year now, at the same time, uh, Plano started a year ago. But we've been doing.
So what's the timeframe where you see, like, residents really gearing up and participating? Is it zero to six months, or six months to twelve?
Um, the trend, the trend seems to be, when we do the, you know, if we roll it out right, if you do it on social media, if the city has, um, constant contact, you know, email, as well as the newsletters and on the website, like, if you look at some Corin or Little Elm, if you scroll, that has a scrolling screen on the website, hey, don't forget to recycle your textiles, donate them or recycle it, don't put them in the trash. And using Facebook posts like that, usually at the very beginning, we'll get a, we get surge material, uh, people being involved. Of course, as they see our vans coming around on a regular basis, it reminds them to, hey, I can't throw this stuff in the trash. I don't know about you, but I can't throw a plastic bottle in a regular trash can anymore, right? We can't. I mean, it's, it's impossible. So, 'cause we've been, you know, and so the same thing needs to happen with textiles. If I can't throw this sock with a hole in it in the trash, I gotta, I need to do something. I put it in my simple recycling bag, right? So we start, and then, and so we're educating and trying to change behavior, because the landfills are getting full, and it's the fastest-growing part of the residential waste stream. Uh, at the end of the day, we do see a, a tendency to slow down. It depends if the city continues to help do awareness campaigns. What I try to do is remind the city gate, please, go sign up on Facebook, maybe even run a sponsored ad, remind people, uh, some cities to do something. No, and what we try to do, of course, as I mentioned to this, we'll do another mailer that seem, you know, people, oh, yeah, I need to, I need to do something. So, that's, and so that's, then, usually it becomes pretty consistent. At the same time, we see, uh, a lot of residents use us, there's, we have a lot of repeat users once they get used to using it. Uh, they'll tend to put stuff out on a regular basis.
Where's your collection center, next to the metro?
Everything we collect ends up in Irving, Texas, and then from there, it ends up in Houston, where, as, as you saw it break out, some of it ends up on ships and ends up in other countries, or, or other recycling partners in Mexico and other places. All right?
Well, you know, speaking personally, I, I think it fills a nice gap, because I've scratched my head when I have old towels that are crappy.
Yeah?
And I go, I'm not giving this to anybody. But it feels stupid to throw it in the trash can. I, I really, I have socks with a lot of holes in them. I, I have stuff like that. I, I don't really know what to do with them, but it seems kinda goofy to throw them in the trash can, you know, I, but I would never give them to anybody. They're not, they're not brand new quality.
We do fill that gap. For example, we work with a lot of nonprofits. We, a lot of nonprofits want stuff that's rack-ready, you know, and put on the rack and sell and benefit their charity, whatever. And so we actually, once charity we work with is, uh, Mission Central out for, out in Bedford, where we, we take everything they don't want, buy it from them for so much a pound, because we have, they don't have those markets that we've had, uh, we've developed over thirty years. They're, they don't have that, those international recycling partners that we have. So we actually buy from them what they don't want, so.
Where'd you tell me you started?
Uh, we're out of Salona, Ohio. It's a, uh, it's actually, uh, again, it's a thirty-year-old family-run, uh, recycling business. The, this particular, uh, part of the business was started about three and a half years ago. We're now in five states servicing two million households, Michigan, Ohio, Minnesota, Massachusetts, North Carolina, and Texas, which is like its own country, basically, carrying all those places. Okay? It really is, it's just the logistics here are way different. But anyways, so, we're expanding rapidly, and we're, you know, obviously, there's a lot of cities this size, because of where they're located, we just can't even talk to, usually, five, that five thousand residents and up, is what we're, we're targeting, because of the logistics. But because you guys are just right in the perfect spot, it just makes sense, if you drive right by here, let's do it. Um, so, anyway, I hope that answered all your questions, like, or consider, if you have any other questions, I'm sure Linda can. If you have any other questions, I'm sure Linda can send an email or if you have any more questions about the agreement. It's pretty straightforward, we are looking for a long-term agreement and, because we're making this investment. So hopefully, your city will consider this and we help reduce what goes into our landfill.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor, second, councilor want to take action?
Of course, I think it's a great idea. I do think, however, that it's, my sense is, is that the more frequent, frequency for that, as opposed to, you know, in two months, just simply because of trade people get accustomed to the idea and that type of thing. I'm assuming we may have the opportunity to change that frequency at some point.
Right, I don't know, they're coming with a recycling pickup.
Yeah.
Just come up to town and see what's there.
Our recycling base already coincides with Little Elm, so they're already in there.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. I was a little concerned about the exclusive part, because of, through the church and CCAR and all that stuff. But I guess we wanted to dovetail them specifically, we could take it to. Well, my guess, my understanding would be, if you want to make a motion, the motion would be to have me execute the contract with Simple Recycling. That would be the motion if you so desire, or you can make no motion at all.
Can we have a copy of the contract so we can do it? I think it's.
It's in the, it's in the document.
It's in you? No, it's, oh, it's in the patent.
So that's, that's a motion, if you want to make it. If you don't, we'll move on, so. Anyone want to make a motion?
I'm for, I'm, you know, like, I think my concern with bulk trash is it would.
Well, that's okay, I was just, I was just throwing that out there.
Yeah, and if we coincide, yeah, I know it's the other question I had. If we coincide, we'll allow, that's, that's no special trip.
Okay.
Yeah, I did talk to Allied, they don't have any control, they don't care.
And if, yeah, it's, all the residents still have choice, if they want to go with personal donations, they don't have to.
It's simple, stop, you stop her out.
Right. Drive it to your room, please.
Okay, you got a question?
I've got kind of a concern with this. We had something like this in Arizona, and I brought a lot of traffic in from people trying to get the orange bag before they do.
And they know weekly when it's coming, so then you have the same vehicles that pull up and grab it, that, you know, wait a minute, that's not yours, but how do you prevent that? I think that's smaller little town that we are, we didn't get a lot of that traffic right now.
Mayor and council, we happen to share our experience with that. That's something that has periodically happened in all the cities that we've went in. It's another thing we asked, we asked, you know, the city to help us with. For example, just last week, we had somebody pick up some of the bags. They had a little trailer on a truck, and so, we, one of our.